Seven o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting. The May First Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. First item here, Paige, can you help us roll call?
David Larson.
Present.
John Meyer.
Present.
Pete Fuller.
Present.
Stephanie Garner.
Present.
David Huser. Kate Payne.
Your.
Kathy Olson. Here.
All right, that's enough for our quorum, so we'll go ahead and go on to item C, which is approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
That's approval.
Motion. Perfect. Do I have a second? Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, that motion passes. All right. Item D is approval of the last meeting's minutes of April 3, 2025, as written. I would ask for a motion for that.
I move the area approved as presented.
All second.
All right. Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, that motion passes as well. All right. So, section E is our public hearing, so lots to talk about here. So I just usually try to cover a couple things. I don't know if any of you have been to one of these meetings before, but basically the way it'll work is I'll just simply open a public hearing here shortly. I would ask anyone who wants to speak to the commission, address the entire commission. When you're at the podium, just state your name, state your address. Based on the number of responses and feedback that we have, I'm gonna leave everybody to three minutes for your first session of discussion. And then, you know, if you have more to say, you can come up again. We obviously wanna hear from as many of you who are willing to speak and talk to us as possible. And then we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have some commission updates then move through our process. So, that being said, I will officially open the public hearing for item one, which is the PD rezoning application for the parcel ID 911376002. Just have a guess is why most of you guys are here. We're happy to listen to your feedback here. Comments, as you wish. And yeah, just approach the podium as will.
Good evening. My name is Robert Warham. I live at 2111 Third Street Southwest. And you may have seen, I sent in a written commentary about my concerns about the project that's going to be attempted. I put it in four bullet points. I'll consolidate that into two, so you keep things moving along, as requested by the chair. First, I want to speak as the HOA president of the Centennial Oaks Clubhouse Patio Homes. We want to talk about the safety issues that I foresee possibly along Third Street Southwest. We get quite a bit of traffic through there. Truck traffic, semi-traffic going, that's headed for Hy-Vee, headed for spot and rolls, and for other places there. And it's gonna be more, more traffic on there if there are new homes being built. I live on Third Street, and so do seven of the HOA people live on Third Street. And we have to back out. And sometimes that gets kind of interesting, backing out on there. People are, I think, are being the speed limit a little bit better. Somebody mentioned last night where I was at, that in front of our homes, the street is 36 feet wide, which helps when there's traffic coming and trying to get packed around there. When you turn the corner and go straight south where the housing proposal is, it narrows to 30 feet wide. With 17 driveways, people trying to, people trying to get out, it's, it's gonna make it kind of dangerous. Also, I wanna talk about the condition of the roadbed. Right now, with more traffic on there, and I know there's gonna be more construction traffic if this takes place, it's gonna be hard on the roadbed. I'd like to talk personally about the environmental issues. I invited you to take a look out there. If you're not familiar with it, about halfway down from the clubhouse to the south is a low, kind of natural, or maybe it was actually man-made, kind of area for, for water to be, to fill in, in case, you know, to, and it comes under, it comes under a culvert there. It's a natural place for water to go in. They have to bring in a lot of filter, and they will have to bring in a lot of filter to even the south with the, to grade with the road. The plans I have seen, a short channel going through there, but if we get some of these pounding rains, that's gonna go across the fairway. That's gonna go across to some people that I know live down in the neighborhood with the water, water going down there. And I heard this brought up last night. I was a, kind of a mouse in the corner at the country club meeting. I'm not a member, but I was there, and just, just to see what was going on. Plus the fact, I just hate to see trucking a lot of filter again, and again, and again in town. Kind of helps, you know, destroy the neighborhood. Thank you for listening. You can reread my, my notes that I submitted earlier in the week. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Absolutely.
I know you since I was unplanning and zoning for 10 years. Anyway, Bill McCurdy, I live at 100 Fairway Drive. And my concerns, a lot of them have to do with what the golf course has already done. They built a swimming pool. Now they've built the pickleball courts. That has forced water to run down toward the housing area where we live. And we have a lot of water running down that street constantly. It's still draining, even though we haven't had a lot of rain since last week. And it still keeps draining constantly. And it's only gonna get worse, especially the things that were just explained about if they're gonna build those along there, they're gonna have to fill in along there, they're gonna raise it all up. The drainage is terrible, and it's gotten worse. When we moved there, yeah, it wasn't bad, but it's over the years, it's increased and increased and increased. And I hate to see it go further than that. So I hope that you, and also the fact about the traffic, that traffic on Third Street, I wouldn't wanna have to back out of one of those driveways. It's bad enough, as he said, when you go up, up there right now, past those other homes up there, it's, you gotta really be careful to watch out for them. And it's, it's not gonna get better, it's gonna get a lot worse. So I hope you can see that and make a decision that's in favor of what the people are saying tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you don't, just take turns, that's fine.
All right.
Good evening.
My name's Bob Cousin. I'm the only member of BCGC, excuse me, which owns the fairways development down there. And there's 28 lots there. We haven't developed them all out yet. My big concern is, as Bill just mentioned, drainage for one, the amount of water that's gonna come down there with that many driveways, shrinking the whole golf course, which is gonna put more safety concerns in there for golf balls. As they narrow the fairway, they're pushing back 100 and some feet with these lots, I believe. I'm not sure exactly what it is. And I should know that, but we're losing the, the design green space of the master plan of this golf course, which is done in 1999 when it was first approved. Just basically, I don't think it's a place for that, that housing that's gonna go there. I think Brent has done some nice projects around Waverly, many nice projects. He really has, but I just don't think this one fits where it's at. There's other options, there's still developable areas in the golf course. Tagalong Trail, which, which I think Brent owned at one time, and then he sold, but that was 20 some lots there that, that are now owned by a different person that doesn't plan, to my knowledge, to develop it. But to change the design of what we was established in 1999, people bought the houses out there and enjoyed the living out there. The biggest problem there is to take away, to build onto the golf course itself, in my opinion. I just don't think it's the right fit to come down that street and alter the golf course, as well as, as add housing that wasn't originally plotted into this addition. So, I do have, I gave a sheet of objections that I filed to the whole commission here, and I do have copies if anybody would like to look at that. I don't wanna stand up here and read them all to you. I don't think I can do that in three minutes, but that's what I have to say at this point, so, thank you.
Thank you. My name's Ron Bigger, and I live at 104 Fairway. And part of the reason that we purchased our home out there in 2015 was of our understanding of how the development was laid out, and that there was anything that the development of the fairway addition out there, we understood that when we bought, and for, and that other projects out there and other developments certainly probably would be very limited and may not, you know, and might, may not take place. And that was kind of the reason why we purchased out there, was we liked to lay out the way things work, understanding that there was going to be some other development as far as Bob Cousin's development down there. It's concerned, so, thank you.
My name is Raj Patel. I'm at 173 Augusta Lane. 10 years ago, when this agreement or sale agreement happened, I was part of the board. And at that time, the presentation was given, the development of the housing was parallel to the parking lot next to the pool, not to the street. And that's how it was presented. That being said, yesterday I had that question to Brent about saying that, okay, what can change? There was no explanation on that one, saying that, what happened there. But point is, if this continue, then pretty much if you guys are ready to let the golf course go by developing bits and pieces here, because if this goes here, next time, there is no stoppage. It will be always refer back to saying that, oh, last time you had no problem. So my humble request is just think, and just make sure that it is taken care properly. Because we have invested a lot of money in that area, and we enjoy the openness, and originally that's how it was designed, just like he referred to 1999. So, the green space in Waverly is getting less and less now, because of the development everywhere. How much we gonna go down on the green space, we don't know. Of course, we need the housing, no doubt about it, but there should be some balance. What area we want to continue, what area we don't want to continue. Because the problem is, that will impact everything, including tourism, invitation to the people. When they look at it, it's crowded, just like any other city. And then that will kill the appeal. To move in this town, a lot of people walk in the evening in those area very freely because of the environment, clean air, because of the green space. That is the key element. Environment-wise, clean air is very essential in your life. And that's why people walk in an open area, in a field and everything. And it's so beautiful when it comes to summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Will Cousin. I live at 141 St. Andrews Place. My biggest concern is where does the development stop? In 2018, they tried to develop a piece of the golf course that was rejected five to one, and it was rejected because they were worried about the community, it wasn't in the community's best interest. So Commissioner Day noted that separating and selling piece by piece isn't in the community's best interest. We bought out there because of the open space. We enjoy the golf course. We think they've done a great job with the golf course, but when you modify the golf course without any studies on how that'll impact the property values out there, it's concerning. I also submitted a letter that I think highlights some areas where I think this violates the comprehensive plan that the city has. So I would ask you to take note of that and reference your comprehensive plan, and we'd appreciate it if you go by that. I know that's an important plan for the city. I also reference how this violates the 1999 master plan for the course. And while I do realize there's been some changes with the pool added on that, it didn't impact the course like this is going to. It, it's gonna shrink it significantly along that hole, and those houses right there, with all the development with the pool and everything right there, I think there's concerns for errant golf balls to be hit over there. I think most of the people that I know in the community disapprove of this plan. And last night, when we were at the town hall at the club, and we asked if there's any future development, can you guarantee there won't be other areas of development? There was no guarantee on that. So, what's to stop them from continuing to develop on the course and devalue our properties? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Bryce Aukin. I'm the civil engineering representative for the applicant on this project. I'd just like to speak to some of the drainage issues that the residents have posed. One of the first things that we look at when we're designing a development like this is how we're gonna control the stormwater runoff. It's one of the first residents mentioned, there is a small low spot that's just adjacent to the roadway, and that is used to collect stormwater as it runs off of Third Street. And so, some of the initial things that we've looked at and we've discussed with the public works director is extending the storm sewer system so that it bypasses the houses there proposed to be developed, and so that that stormwater can be collected where the fairway formerly was or is proposed to be, and so they would be detained and slowed down, and then released at a slower rate. And by doing that, it actually increases or enhances the downstream flow, so it, it helps reduce that flow that's coming off of the development. So, that's some of the things that we look at when we're designing this development, and we're taking drainage issues into a serious consideration of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
My name is Kevin Wilms. I live at 3604 Monahan Drive. And I previously submitted an email for your consideration that outlines multiple concerns, but I'm gonna focus on just one of them. In addition to living at 3604 Monahan, I'm also the, along with my wife, the owner of 177 Augusta Lane. And just this last week, we broke ground on a new build out there in the property and the development. You can imagine our surprise when, the weekend after we broke ground, we get a letter that talks about making these changes to the golf course that we had chosen to invest in. One of the exact reasons why we chose to be out there was to enjoy the space at his Prairie Lakes, what it is today, what we thought it was gonna be years to come. This change is proposed would irrevocably change the course for the worse. It goes totally against the reasons why we wanted to be out there, and I'm sure it goes against the reasons why many people over the last 20-plus years chose to invest in that community. For that reason, among many others, I urge you to reject this.
Would anyone else like to speak? If you do, speak now. Any other comments? Yeah. All right. Seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing, and then we'll move to commission discussion now. Paige, could you start us with the agenda memo on this?
Yeah, it was just a pretty quick one, as you've seen in a lot of the public comments. There, this first action is to look to amend that PD district. So when a PD zoning district is given, you have an overall site plan showing what each area will consist of. On this one, the original showed that north portion as golf course, or the south portion as the golf course, and then north as the clubhouse. Was it 2016, I believe, there is amendment to allow for the pool and then a multifamily residential structure that would kind of hover over those parcel lines? So this request is to change it into just residential development for 17 homes, single family detached homes.
Thank you. I forgot to ask you before I said thank you, I guess. So, overall, I could be wrong here, so I count 15 email responses highlighting several issues, and I'm gonna guess some of the same signatures are on the note sheet that we have gathered, which totals 31 signatures as well. So, any other feedback that you've received that we haven't?
Nope. Everything's been passed along.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Members of the commission? Discussion points?
Well, I don't, I guess I'll be first. I put a lot of credence in the original master plan, and it has been changed to facilitate some of the development in the past in 19, in 2016 and so on. To me, this is a substantial change, carving out that row of houses along Third, just, I just can't buy into that. I just can't. I think Mr. Cousin's proposal where he says, basically, for 26 years, property owners and golf course members have relied on this city-approved configuration. And as was mentioned by the last gentleman, you know, he's just dug a hole to start building a new house based on that plan. And to start messing with it, I think, is just not good stewardship. They did change the plan by selling off the, allowing the driving range to move and be a different use. They have changed it so that that vacant ground that's straight south of the parking lot could even become multifamily, but now it's occupied by a swimming pool and a pickleball court, you know? So, you know, I just can't justify that here. This commission member would be opposed to the change.
I would like an explanation. On page two of the site development plan, there is allowance for drainage. Could, could somebody explain that? Because right now, if there is, there's an enormous amount of drainage out there. So how, can somebody explain how that is gonna work?
So in developments like this, typically what we'll do is we'll build some sort of earthen structure that retains the water and slowly releases it over a period of time. So that's what we would do in this case.
Where?
Where?
Behind the houses.
Um, behind the houses.
Sort of where that green line.
On the fairway?
On the fairway? Is there a?
Where, behind the houses?
It's adjacent to the fairway. Yeah.
What is there now is a detention base.
Yeah, yeah. And that's on the south side, not on the south side, the west side.
On the west, on the west side.
And that's where homes would.
That's gonna be filled in with homes.
Right. Yeah. And so, the one that's there right now is actually quite deep. This one would be fairly shallow, I mean, just a foot or two tall. You would hardly notice that there's a difference. And in a case like this, where there's ample area to disperse the water, we would include, like, native grasses typically, sort of like you'd see in other parts of the course.
So what's the green line going up and going through Bob Cousin's property?
That's, that's been modified.
Yeah, that's an old.
Sanitary sewer, that's the old.
Yeah, you'll see on the other preliminary plats.
If you go to the subdivision plaque, you can see the new route for the sanitary sewer.
I have a question, if, sorry, if you were done. Are you, I didn't want to interrupt you. Okay.
For, for me?
For you, yeah. I mean, honestly, you know more about this than probably, definitely than I do, so, what, why is this a good idea?
I might defer that to the applicant. That's maybe a better question for them. We're providing what the city requires from an engineering perspective on this project, and that's kind of our role. And so, addressing the drainage issues is one thing that we're looking at.
So let me, let me just build on that, though.
Okay.
The plans don't show, from what I can see, the revised design of the golf course, because this is gonna impact that.
It's one there.
It's down in the development.
If you go under the regular business, F1, there's a.
Regular business in the subdivision.
Oh, okay.
There's.
Which one did you click on?
Prairie Lakes Hole 10 realignment.
Section.
And it's, it's down. There you go.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Let me look back and ask that question.
Well, there's.
Okay, so it, it basically takes the, I don't play golf, the fairway, is that the right word? And pushes it east, which means it's gonna be fairly close to the prop, the new, it would be close to the new properties on the west side, and closer to the future development of that Outlet K? Is that what that's called?
Fairway.
Um, it does seem tighter there than it does anywhere else throughout the golf course today, in terms of the relationship of the fairway to the houses. And I guess that strikes me as a little risky. I mean, I think that if I were gonna, I guess I'd be worried about a golf ball, I mean, especially if I was hitting it.
Me as well.
Yeah, you know, I. Yeah, you know, I think that's definitely something that we've discussed with the applicants. It is a little tighter, but, you know, if, you know, that's not necessarily something that we're taking into account for when we're producing the engineering documents for this.
Sure.
So I, I kind of can't speak to that.
So then who's responsible for designing a successful and well-designed fairway? Is that part of this development? I mean, you're forcing then the golf course to have to redo something that they weren't planning on redoing. Whose responsibility is it to make that be as good as it was?
The applicant owns all of it.
Okay.
But it seems to me that it's just moving the lines of that fairway for financial purposes of a development.
It does look like that, yes.
Where is your water retain, your retention pond? Where's that at? It's not, I don't see it on here. I see you've got a drain line going from the street down past the fairway, but is that where it's going to be, right outside, right off the fairway?
Yeah.
Right next to the houses of the, of the fairway addition over here?
Not necessarily. No, and we're still working through this.
You've got 24,000 square feet of housing slash driveway that's going to take up green space, and you're going to tell me that no water's going to land over here in the other houses?
We're working through that with Justin at the city, Public Works Director. But our initial plans would be to place that retention area just what is north on this plan of the tee boxes, so if you went back to the golf course layout.
But that still drains straight down into the fairway division. All this whole thing, the tough drop of the mat shows that goes right straight into his whole property line, his whole subdivision.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It does right now. And so this would retain the water that's running off of these proposed homes.
Where's it going to go once it retains it? How are you going to do that? You're going to build up a big wall between the fairway development and yours, and the fairway?
Well, so, when we look at a development from, when we look at a development from an engineering perspective, we just, we're not increasing runoff from a proposed development. That's our requirement.
You're decreasing where the water soaks into the ground, so yes, you are increasing runoff.
Okay.
I've done this before when I used to live out there. It does, it does increase runoff.
Okay, well, we've made every effort with, you know, to work with the city to try and, you know, amend this plan.
I'd just like to know, I understand where you put your retention, but how is it going to be retained and not go into the homes of the future homes of the fairway division?
Will be released on the natural water course, just as it was. So, as the water were to run across the fairway, it would then disperse just as it was in the previous state. I, I mean, I know this, it, it's hard to answer that question, because it seems like we're collecting the water downstream and towards that development, whereas we're just trying to retain it and slow that water down from reaching that downstream.
Isn't retaining also collecting?
Retaining, collecting, yes.
Wouldn't that render the use of that hole unusable for a longer period of time?
The golf hole?
Yeah.
This would be off of the golf.
Unless it rained a lot, then it would be on the golf hole.
Right.
What's that?
Unless it rained a lot, then it would be on the fairway, or even into the development.
So in this diagram, we're showing it north of the tee boxes that were proposed.
Does he plan on raising the tee boxes and raising the green? Because that's, again, more drainage.
This is still very preliminary, so we haven't dug into that level of detail, yeah.
So north of the tee box, you mean like closer to the football courts, that area?
Sorry, that would be planned north on this diagram. So, to the actual east of.
To the actual east of the tee box.
Any more questions?
I just have one. Understanding a lot of this is preliminary, could you give like a percentage estimate of the stormwater plan? Is it 10% done? Do you, you know, just kind of like out of this timeline where you are right now, could you qualify how much you've looked at the retention?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to quantify that, that type of analysis that we do. We're definitely looking at from the city, a lot of the runoff, actually, that's attributed through that area is coming off the road. So that's why, working with Justin, trying to, you know, identify exactly how much water is coming off and how much we're going to need to retain. So, right now, I would say we're very preliminarily looking at that, but I can't really put a number to it at this point.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I am, I would like to hear from some of the folks who have spoken about why they feel this will devalue the property they already own. Much of that property is quite a ways away from this, from these 17 homes. But why do you feel it will devalue your property at this point?
Yeah, I'll speak on that.
Sure.
When the course was originally built, there were studies done to design that golf course, to be a top-tier golf course for this area. Modifying that design changes all specs for that golf course. You're going from a par four to a par three on that hole. So already, you're losing one stroke. They talked about maybe changing a hole that's a par four to a par five to make it the same par, but that changes the whole, the whole way you play that golf course.
How does that affect property values, though?
Well, that, part of the reason people want to live on there is because it's a top-tier course, and that's why you build nice homes on that course, and you had all that open space. When you start to pack a bunch of houses in there, you lose that feel for the neighborhood. You lose green space. Waverly has sold off a park down by the Cedar River in the past. They've sold off green space, so now they're losing more green space to accommodate housing. We, I personally feel that it impacts my property value when you pack in those houses. It's a different neighborhood for Waverly. It's not a neighborhood where the houses are packed in there. And when you start to do that, where does it stop? So we approve this, then we have another one wherever else there's prairie grass or they want to modify the golf course again. And so I'm thinking of the future, when I think about my property value as well. There's a lot of other spaces they'd like to develop out there, and I don't agree with that. One of the reasons I moved out there and I support that community is because of that space and because of the layout of the course.
So I, I, there are a lot of reasons that I think that this isn't a good idea. There are some arguments, though, that I'm struggling to understand the logic behind. And one of them is this sort of green space argument, to be honest. I, while it is a green space, it is not really a publicly-used green space except to play golf. It's not like anyone can just go do it. Playing golf is prohibitive for many people in the community. I, and I, I mean, I don't play golf, so, but I just don't feel like that's an argument that's as strong as stormwater, or 17 driveways on the street, or changing the master plan and kind of what it was intended to be. So I'm a little skeptical on some of the arguments here, and I understand what you guys are all thinking. You're sitting there going, how many arguments can we make to see if it will stick? And I get that. And, but I do think that we should maybe not focus on the loss of green space, because I don't really think that you're really affecting overall green space of the city that much, or really public parks, in a way.
I can understand that. If you would see the amount of people that walk around the loop that live in that neighborhood, everyone.
The loop within the golf course?
Even the street. They walk down the street there because there's no side.
There'll be sidewalks here.
From other neighborhoods, too.
Yeah, it, it's a lot of traffic out in that neighborhood. There's already an Aldi over there that brings a lot of traffic to that neighborhood. And, so it, it's a concern of ours. It might not be the primary concern, but it is a concern. And then where does it end, you know? So we approve this, and then we go and approve other areas, and sooner or later, no one wants to live out there anymore. So, I mean, that's not why we moved out to that neighborhood. And as you saw in 2018, the council notes, they denied it. There were some other areas on the far east side of the course that they were trying to develop as well. So, you know, there's been no studies done. There's been no studies to show whether or not it increases or decreases the property values. So I think, you know, I didn't know about this until two days ago, and I live in that neighborhood, and I think a lot of people in this room didn't know about it until two days ago. So we've not seen any studies to show what it's going to do to our property values. And that's a concern for us.
David, how, how, you know, just from the perspective of the master plan, how binding is that?
So, I want to clarify, when you say master plan, are you talking golf course master plan or the comprehensive plan?
I'm talking the master plan, the 1999 master plan.
Plan Unit Development. And what were you questioning? I missed it.
How, how binding is it?
How binding is it? It's binding, it's just like zoning. It's a zoning, it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance, isn't that correct, Paige? A Plan Unit Development?
So.
It went through three readings, and it's adopted as a.
As a PD district. The plan itself, if it gets amended of how Bill did it in 18, or was proposing to do in 18, it's just a, excuse me, resolution change at that point, because you're just changing the layout of it, rather than a zoning ordinance.
But I mean, we're designating, this is an application to change use from golf course to residential. So that's just, that's the same weight as a zoning ordinance change. So it's got to go to the council and go through, I assume, three readings and, and the whole bill.
And so how binding is it? I don't know how to answer that for sure. It's kind of like any of your other subdivisions that you have, I guess, is we've approved this layout to go forward, now we've gotten plan of surveys to change those previously. That's your smaller scale of what this is. This is obviously a lot bigger of an area. So can it be done? Yes. Should it be done? It's up to, kind of, the applicant and their members, since that's a private business on there.
Yeah, so, the way I understand this, Kathy, is that, in order to make this change, you come through the process that we're going through right now, right? So that's the binding side of it. It's not an unchangeable thing, there's just a process for change, and that's what's happening now. This is the first step in that process for change. So it's, it's binding in regard to.
So in the.
You have to go through this process.
Okay, so in the, I'm, I'm just looking at this procedurally. So let's suppose that this is not approved. Let's pretend it's not approved by the commission tonight. What are, I'm, I'm kind of thinking about Will's comments about where does this, where do these changes stop? And so how does, what, what happens if this is denied? Then the owner can pursue other changes to the PD.
Well, we'd have to go through the same amendment process.
And go through the same process, yes.
Correct.
So the question, really, that we're dealing with, is this a, I'll just use the term "good," I don't know if that's the best word, but is this a change to that PD that makes sense for whatever technical reasons we talk about, correct? Which, it might be different on another part of a change to that PD.
Is this how it was changed to have a multiple, multiple-family area? Because that wasn't in the original plan, and it was changed to have a multiple-family designation there, so I think when he, when Brent first proposed this back, I don't remember what year it was, he talked about putting two buildings, four stories, with 100 people residential, or 100 unit residential. So I mean, that's how that changed from the original. So that's been done once. And so you, you take a look at here.
Even though that wasn't implemented, it became a swimming pool instead.
But it's still a multiple-family designation right now.
Is this part multiple-family?
No.
No, but the, the area to the north of there.
Yes, yeah.
You know, so he could go take down the pickleball court and put up a, a multiple-family type of a unit, so I think that's the thing you've got to be thinking about here, is that's something that will come back, because he can rightfully do that right now. What he's doing now is putting these down along Third Street. I'm not trying to sit here and advocate for him, and I want to make sure we took a look at the whole history here and understand what's happening here. I think I'm right on that, I'm not for sure. Is that right?
So you're saying, David, there's a chunk of this property.
This chunk right here, I, be south of the parking lot, is, was amended in 16, according to the resolutions, to allow him to put, we talked about a church or multifamily dwelling in that green space, or that open field.
It's on the main screen, so everyone can join us here. It's the area south of the parking lot, like I said.
I think you've got to look at the whole picture here and understand what has happened in the past here with the multiple-family situation, and that's how you change different areas. So it can be changed throughout the whole PD. So I mean, it's just something that.
And so going on that history with that, too, because it's happened one other time, the Triangle of Breezy Hills. So early 18, end of 17.
Good way.
What was that? Breezy Hills, Kate's pulling it up in the corner, southeast corner. There's, looks like it's owned by Ted Waitman right now. That plan of survey was approved in end of 17 or early of 18. And so that was, also was not on the original plan. Now that's just one, single family. But that one was approved, and the one that was denied was just to the north of those five lots. And that was later in 18.
Now have any of these previous changes changed the actual golf course, like the greens and the tee boxes and the fairways?
That triangle, I don't think so. I don't know about the swimming pool area, that, did that change it? No?
Yeah, I'm happy.
Okay.
Brent Dahlstrom, thanks for, thanks for a few minutes. Just wanted to address a few things. It's, it's an interesting spot to be in. A lot of these people in the room are, are great customers of the golf course, long-term supporters, so I understand that. I'm thankful for them, and I understand that I've made some of them upset by this proposal. So it, it's a weird spot to be in.
Do you wish to withdraw it?
I, I do not, I do not. I think if, if this is turned down, we will go back to the multifamily buildings and put up the 100 units. That's, that was the original plan, and so.
100 units.
John, that's what we proposed in 16, and we brought that forward, and that was approved.
That kind of sounds like.
Well, multifamily.
No, no, it's not, that's right, that's, that was the original plan. I just want to, just want to be clear about that, but we have turned, changed the golf course.
So I'm going to jump in just for a minute. So I'd like to keep it to one comment at a time, just so we can maintain some discussion here. So while Mr. Dahlstrom has the podium, let, let's let him speak.
So the golf course was changed when we put the, when we put the pool in. I think, Kate, you made a comment about the safety of the hole. So currently, when, when golfers tee off on that hole, they, they pull out their driver, and they do their best. With this change, we shift it to a much shorter hole, where it would be a, it'd be more of a 150-yard shot, where no longer you'd have that, that long-range club. So that, that is a thought. It really has to be changed either way, where they're teeing off from right now, an air shot could go in the pool. It, it has to be changed. It's going to be addressed. I, I think that it's, it's not a threat, it's very likely that this hole will be a par three, and that, and that's, that's a decision that myself and the staff are going to have to make. So we did change the hole at that time when we brought the pool in, because they did tee off from a further part behind that. As far as Ted's property, that, that did not change the course at all. It looks the exact same as it does today. Ted never went forward with building anything there. Mark Everett owns the lots, and I think someone just started building a house there on the corner, just last week, possibly, in one of those lots, and he owned that before I did. I did. But yeah, golf courses have changed. We all, we have two great courses in this community, and at one point, the golf course, the municipal course, was completely different. And a part of it was sold to the hospital. And a new part was added. It's, the precedent has happened here before, and I think it's a great course still there. And, you know, I think this is a great course. I love the cousin family. They've been, so it's hard to be against them. But I do believe everyone's values has raised with the level of investment that we've put in this course over the last 10 years. And I think it'll continue to do so because we've been stewards of the course. We won't, as long as we own it, we plan to make it better each year. And I know there's an argument of whether or not this makes it better or not, and I understand that we are all not going to agree on that. I think what we're here to do is talk about a change from the plan to have two buildings, which was the plan I brought in 16, and that was approved, and change that from that plan of 100 units to this plan of 17. I was, I was myself surprised by the pushback because I thought we were coming down in the density a long ways. As far as the water runoff, there's people that are, they're engineers, engineers that work for the city, engineers that work for us, and that has to be approved before anything is built. Nothing can be built without an approved drainage plan. And that goes beyond this meeting tonight. I don't think that's what this meeting tonight is about. But anyway, I appreciate it. I understand that there's some, some pushback in the crowd and up here tonight. So if you have any questions for me, I will stay until you tell me you're done with me.
I did ask an earlier question that I think maybe you were going to have to answer.
I'm ready.
Which is, why is it a good idea?
Why is it a good idea? Kate, I own this build, business and this golf course, and to the best of my ability, I need to have it run profitably, or else we will not have a golf course at all. 10 years ago, when, when I was called by the members, some of the members, it, it was just going to be sold to a church. They asked me to invest in the property and, and take over that ownership. And I agreed to do that. Since then, we've put in millions of dollars of investment through the pool, through the pickleball, through renovating the clubhouse. It's hard to make money at a golf course. So we do have to find ways so that, so that we can make this golf course a better place long term. Everyone that lives on the golf course, they're more likely to be a member of this golf course while I own it or when someday someone else owns this. So I believe it's in the betterment of this course to have more people live on the course. I love hearing the story about someone built on the course and how excited they are. I think these 17 people would be excited to live there as well, to enjoy this course, to enjoy the view. And so the more people that can live on the course, from my perspective as the owner, is a positive for the course.
Kate, answer this question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know our public hearing is closed, but I feel if there's other comments or discussions, feel free to hear those comments now. You know, I don't want to stifle that. I just wanted to make sure we were talking in order.
I, just a general comment, that the part about the 100-unit apartment complex, I think you'll lose members, and that's a risk he's willing, willing to take. I'm confident in that. I know myself, I wouldn't be a member if that happened. And I probably wouldn't stay in that community.
Hi, Dale Gokey. I live at 168 Eagle Ridge Drive. You know, we talk about the housing. Mr. Dollstrom has done a lot of good things in the community. Nope, no question. This, however, is not the right thing to do. He sold the driving range for $1 million. That was changed so they could have multi-family housing on it. 10 acres, 10 acres of housing right across the street. He also bought Tagalong Trail. It has 23 already plotted lots, already plotted. He sold that off. Plenty of opportunity to housing instead of carving up a beautiful golf course. It's wrong. It's wrong on so many issues. Is this wrong? From a safety standpoint, you, there was some mention of packing all this in, in that area. I have two sons that live on the golf course too. And my one son, Quint, lives on Mulligan Circle. Hole number two has some tee boxes spread out there. You couldn't imagine that somebody could hit a golf ball way over there to the housing from, to Mulligan Circle. My son has broken windows on his house. His siding has been hit. He gets golf balls in the backyard. And he even found a golf ball on the front of his house on Mulligan Circle. There are some real serious problems when you redesign a course that isn't laid out like this. You're going to have liability questions, I think, for the city and the owner. If you approve this, for example, knowing that a safety issue was raised, a serious safety issue, when you pack these all in, everybody's not a pro golfer that hits it straight every, every time. Hooking, fading, all kinds of things. That area that's packed, is going to be packed with houses, 17, plus all the houses that Bob Cousin wants to build in his Outlet Cave, there's going to be problems. When somebody's child gets hit with a golf ball, puts an eye out, has brain damage, who's going to have liability for that? When the city is aware, nobody's done a safety study on this proposal, I would guess. If somebody has some serious injury or even property damage, and this issue is brought up to the city, and the city says, so what? We don't care. Who's going to pay? Who's going to get sued? That's a serious issue in this area. Not, that doesn't even measure all the other issues that should clearly deny this project.
Thank you.
I also wanted to give Brent credit for what he's done owning the golf course. I think credit is deserved where it's due, and it's certainly due here. Brent also referenced precedent in changing a golf course, and he talked about the city course, which is true. But I would also remind you, what was the exchange in the city course? And whose betterment was it for? It was an expansion of the hospital that benefits the community versus which would this, this change benefit? I think it's clearly different. In the city case, the course also expanded and added two new holes of arguably better quality than what they had before. And the course in general is probably better off for it. This proposal, there's not, there's not a, any sort of pathway to a better option for the course. It is objectively a deterioration of the course. And I think there's other golfers here that could probably fill you in. I know many of you, or at least one of you has claimed that you're not a golfer. I am, and I can tell you it's a less desirable layout of the course. For other golfers who care about that thing, it's less desirable. And if you put the, the plan back up that has the layout of the hole, as somebody who I hate saying this, I'm a reasonably competent golfer, a five handicap approximately. People would consider me a decent golfer. I'm nervous that I could cause a safety issue on that hole. The edge of the green, as it's drawn, if you look from the tee box, the edge of the green, it almost goes over the property owned by Bob Cousin. I can guarantee you, I'm not hitting the green every time, and many other people aren't. Somebody is going to get hit, and they're going to get hit frequently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to put a motion before the commission. I don't mean it to end discussion, but you can ask for it. Basically, I would move that the Planning and Zoning Commission not, not recommend approval of this rezoning application for an amendment of the land use of the PD plan to the City Council.
All right, we have a motion to the commission. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. I would ask that we take a vote. All in favor of the proposal to not recommend this for approval to City Council, say aye.
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 Hearing not opposed.
Aye.
Okay, there is an opposed. Okay. So the motion still passes. We do have one opposed. Kate, did you get everything captured? Kate and Paige, perfect.
Probably should have done a roll call.
I thought about that. But thank you, John. I think we captured-
I think you did too.
I was trying to watch. So, all right.
I just want to say, though, that I think that there's just not been enough vetting of this. I'm not convinced that it's inappropriate to build on the west edge of the golf course. I think that this isn't the solution. And I'm not sure that 100 apartments is the right solution either. But if you look at it holistically, there is development around the perimeter of the golf course everywhere. And yes, there are safety issues even today. So I'm not sure that the idea is wrong. I think that this solution is probably not the right one. So when I say no, it's because I don't think this has been vetted out adequately. That's all.
I've got two hours of driving time to think about this, but I'm going to take it. My concern is I'd much rather have 17 units than have some large multi-family back here. And that's the only, you know, that's, I have a tough time with this. I understand. I've been involved with this course since its beginning. But I, you know, we passed that multi-family because that's what Brent said he was going to do back in wherever it was. And so that's where I'm coming from. I mean, I, I'm not saying I love this, but I love it better than a multi-family being up there. That's, you know, my concern there. Because one way or the other, I mean, he's going to try to turn around and put more people out there. There's a study that was done by Golf Magazine, I think, many, many years ago, and it's been re-done, that half the people that live on a golf course don't even golf because they want to be there for the green space. So I think that's, you know, why there's people that want to be there. So, anyway, just wanted to let everybody know where I'm at.
Yeah, and I, since we're discussing this a little bit, I'd like to just make a comment. You know, I appreciate all of the feedback for and against and your participation in this process. We were able to review all of these comments. And just remind you, this is really, as Planning and Zoning, we are an advisory commission to the City Council. So the final decision does rest with the City Council. So I encourage you to, you know, contact your council member, give them some feedback as well. Sorry, Brent.
Yeah, I'm Ward One, so I'm going to be hearing from all of you.
Certainly reach out. And again, you know, I just wanted to-
But it will take a supermajority of the council, though.
Sure.
It's going to take six or seven thousand.
Yep. I just want to make sure everybody understands that process and we're a piece of it. So.
Five of seven, I'm sorry.
It's six out of seven.
Three quarters of seven, five of a quarter, unless you carve somebody up.
All right. So, hearing no more discussion of that. We do have another discussion here for our public hearing, so I will open a public hearing for item two of the agenda in that section, which is the rezoning application for multiple city properties to U1 environmentally sensitive areas. So with this open now, if anyone would like to comment on that, please follow the same rules, approach the podium, name and address, and address the commission as a whole. Some public hearings still open for this section. Does anybody have any comments for item two in the public hearing section? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. We'll move into commission discussion, starting with Agenda Menlo, if you would, Paige.
Yeah, so no written comments were received for this item prior. What this is, is basically just rezoning a lot of those FEMA flood buyout lots to more accurately reflect of the current use today. Planning and Zoning actually approved this May or maybe July, and I think it was July of 2022. It went to council for first reading, and then it just got dropped. That was right in the time when the previous zoning administrator left. So I think that it just kind of fell through the cracks in that transition, and so we're bringing it back now just to get those more accurately reflect the use.
Yeah, I think I remember this going through.
I do.
Didn't follow it through the council side at the time. So obviously, staff supports this. Any changes to the original proposal, or is this as it was?
Okay, remove two parcels.
So two parcels were removed, which is, is there-
And were they removed because they were already zoned correctly? So they were mistakenly on the first list. They were already rezoned U1.
Okay, so this list currently is as accurate as we know it to be for the-
Yes, Kate very vetted this list.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Some of these, are, some of these properties, they're, they're going to become U1 environmentally sensitive because they were FEMA buyouts.
Correct.
Correct.
But that was before the dam changed and the flood maps changed. But that FEMA designation you're stuck with because it's a FEMA designation.
Yep, depending whether it's in the floodplain or not.
Yeah.
Bill went out.
The way things are getting changed now.
Well, and that's, the comment I had to page is that in the northwest, there's probably 13 to 15 of these lots that are now out of the floodplain and building. I mean, it's very, you know, right across the river over here, we've got a new subdivision north of St. Paul's Church that are building new units. And the lots, lot on the corner is a FEMA lot that's going to become a U. And it's all the same. You can't tell the difference. My, my qualification to page was, as I said, with the dealmaker in Washington, let's not forget that we can, should try to get some rules changed so that we aren't stuck with this forever. Because several, many of these are very, very nice developable lots.
I know a prior city attorney went up to DC and tried lobbying for it and was shot down. I've been working with a couple of representatives because Cedar Rapids was trying to go through the same thing. They were trying to lobby because they've got several lots that now would be buildable and out of the floodplain. And they just keep, but getting pushed back too. So if it was state funds, the state of Iowa has said you can buy those back out for the cost, but the federal is still saying no.
They're very, they're very flexible right now.
Yeah, FEMA doesn't have any money, so I, I wouldn't be surprised if there could be some of this, this changes.
It raises the question of if we just leave it alone and let it sit a little longer, is it a better strategy for future development rather than to change it now?
I don't know that really makes a difference. We can always zone it back again.
Is there anything pending to be built on these for a park or anything?
No.
So it can really just swap out.
Yeah, you can-
And you can still do parks. You could do-
You can do parks and gardens and all that good stuff, but you can't build a structure.
Well, but there's still restrictions on the type of parks. I mean, I know there was some conversation about trying to get a volleyball court on one of them, and was told like, you know, that's not the right kind of drainage or something.
Well, that's still no because of FEMA's guidelines.
Right.
Because of the amount having to fill to bring in. You're not allowed to bring fill into these lots.
into these lots, and there's quite a bit of illegal change on those. And it butts up next to the dry run, so we can't put up a fence to stop the ball from going down into the waterway. So they are very particular, yes, on items you can put onto these lots.
But right now, most of these lots are residential today, and ideally, you would want to be able to fill them in with more residential structures, especially if we have a housing market that's trying to build smaller, low-income housing.
But currently, people look at the map and they say, "Look at all these residential zones that people can build on," and then we have to say, "Actually, no, you can't build those because they're FEMA lots."
So, yeah, it would be nice if the message was clear.
It would be nice if the zoning map reflected that you can't build here. Right, if that changes later, we can switch it back and that'd be fine.
The zoning should reflect what you're using today, the future land use, now that can show as residential, because in the future, we would like to see those as residential.
All right, that makes sense.
Yeah, and the ones that have taken, are not at the flood, they're really only the ones in the northwest, because that's the only ones that the dam held.
Right.
So it's not, you know, of the 30 or 40, it's not all of them, what do you mean?
Okay. Other discussion on this item? If not, I would ask for a motion.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the rezoning of multiple city properties to U1 environmentally sensitive to the City Council. Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded, all in favor...
Yep, it is, once you have a U1, you can always take it back out, right?
Yep.
For sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just, it's important, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's how I heard it as well, so. So we'll resume the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing not opposed, that motion passes as well. So moving on to item E, F, excuse me, inter-regular business, I guess I asked the commission a little bit here, so this is a review of the preliminary plot for the Prairie Links addition. Based on our earlier decision, this is something we can still discuss and review and proceed with. I ask the commission for your thoughts on doing that. Can you really?
I don't, they don't...
I don't see how we can approve a plat for something that we've not approved a development plan for.
They'll have to come back if the council approves it, and then we'll have to approve the plat then.
Yeah, we were debating about this earlier, so.
I mean, I, my hand, I think I'm right on that. You agree with me too? Do you have more?
I don't, I don't know how you can approve a preliminary plat that's contrary to the zoning ordinance, which is what the plan development is.
Yeah, I understand.
And I guess, I would move that we table this until further, whatever happens with the City Council.
Okay.
I'd second that.
All right. So we have, that moved and seconded, I don't think we have to vote on that technically, do we?
So basically, you're postponing it until and if council approves the amendment?
Yes, and we bring it back off the table and...
I would do a vote on it, just...
All right, so we have a motion that's been moved and seconded, all in favor of tabling this agenda item until further clarity is provided by council on this rezoning application. Say aye.
Aye.
Hearing not opposed, that motion passes.
What does, what, what does that mean? Just a second, if there's further clarification from council, what do you mean?
If the council approves the rezoning, then this becomes a valid plat.
And then it would come back to us as an agenda item.
And maybe by then, they'll have the detention basin and all that stuff worked out too. Because right now, that's not shown on this thing here at all.
All right. Any other discussion on that before I move on? All right, item two, regular business, is election of officers, ironically.
Are you willing to continue as Chair of the Commission?
I would accept your proposal for that.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission elect David Larson as chairperson.
Second.
Third.
All right, so let's, ever again, it's been simple enough.
And then a motion, or...
Did we actually take a vote?
She, what's that?
Did we take a vote?
Yeah.
Do I lead the vote?
You can vote, you can go against yourself.
We have a first second now, you can say all in favor, yes. I usually go...
So the zoning commission, you, the chair votes, it's not like the council part.
Yeah, no, I knew, I knew what I, what I was saying.
Or you could hold yourself back until, and break a tie.
You think it's going to be 3-3 then?
Is there a risk?
It didn't sound like it. So anyway, all jokes aside, all in favor of me continuing as commission for another year here, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, myself too, so. All right, that motion passes, I'll say. All right, number two.
Hang on, there's a second part to that before we...
We have to...
Oh yeah, we need the vice president.
Vice chair.
Okay.
That's where I was going.
Okay, I thought you were going to be next to Jen either.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I would entertain discussion on vice chairperson for the commission.
Who's the vice chair right now? John. He's down a stretch. I was going to say it was me.
Remove the Planning and Zoning Commission elect John Meyer as vice chairperson.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded, all in favor of John maintaining vice chairperson, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing not opposed, that motion passes.
Doesn't bother me.
All right, any other discussion?
Dave is such a regular attender, I never challenge, which I like.
That's different. All right, item three.
Yeah.
Moving into that under regular business, which is a plat survey for parcel K at 140, excuse me, 401, Maple Avenue, Waverly. Kate, can you walk us through, Kate, sorry, Paige?
It's okay. Yeah, I apologize that this is very last on the agenda for you to have to sit through the whole item.
That was brutal for our first meeting.
Your item came in last, so... So, yes, they've requested the plat of survey for parcel, parcel K, which is just combining, they or she owns all of the, that platted cul-de-sac, wanting to do an addition on that north side of the property, and so they want to combine those two lots into one to allow for the addition.
All right, any comments from staff? On this one? No? Commission discussion.
I guess I have a question, are you going to take this street return out of there that was built from the cul-de-sac and maybe kind of dress that up a little bit at all?
Still shows it on the plat.
We're not going to do anything with that part of it yet because it's on the other side. But we'll make our houses as nice as we possibly can.
Well, I mean, I would just, when you pull up the Pine Street and you look...
There's not a lot we can do with that, the sewer is right there, so we might have to address the sewer issue on that side of it, so...
I mean, it's got the curb radiuses in there, you're not doing anything, so...
Yeah, no, because our sewer runs, our neighbors and our sewer run right through there, so we, we can't mess with that right now until we...
I mean, I don't, I don't see it as an issue, it's just kind of, Pine Street is never going to go through as a cul-de-sac, you just might as well, I mean, it's...
So it could be vacated, kind of like Tagalong did, where they just vacated there.
Someday.
Yeah.
Or maybe if those lots in the back get sold, you know, I guess that could happen too.
Well, our intention was, we want them so that they would not be developed ultimately. We wanted to preserve the land behind it and just the openness. For our, for our personal generation, that doesn't mean that we will not sell them in the future, what we don't, want to live in Waverly or on that part of Waverly anymore.
Things change.
Yeah, you betcha, you betcha, so, for sure.
Okay.
Maybe I'm just on two, but what exactly is happening? I mean, so you have that larger lot and you're splitting it into two?
No, the, the entire larger lot is being adopted to the south one.
So, this is going to become one just massive lot?
Yes.
Okay.
No, not massive, just larger.
There's, we're having tomorrow on Maple, and then the one right behind us.
Okay, so those two are being merged together?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, so one buildable lot out of the cul-de-sac is being combined with the south lot.
Okay.
Yes, not all five lots, I'm sorry.
But, so all we're doing is just combining those two into a single?
That's right, it's good to meet a seven, we need a setback.
That way you can build over the property line with...
Gosh, so you could, you could build like...
North.
To the north, okay.
Yep.
And you're still respecting the, I would say, where the road would be?
Yes, we're, we're not changing any of the road, our lots are behind the road and there's nothing.
Okay.
By, by the road, you mean the roundabout, or the...
The road is not a road yet.
The platted cul-de-sac.
So you're basically, I would say, 4002 and 4003, so on the last four digits of the...
Yep.
Yep.
So they're, they're bound by the platted cul-de-sac though, for setback?
Yep.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the plat of survey for parcel K located at 401 Maple Avenue, Waverly, to Iowa, to the Iowa, Waverly, Iowa City Council.
Second.
All right, a motion that's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing not opposed, that motion passes as well. Thank you for your feedback. Item G, staff updates, Paige, do you have anything?
Um, just to welcome Pete as his first meeting on the commission.
Good times. Yeah.
Quite the day to kick it off.
Absolutely.
They're always this busy.
Sure.
All right. Item H, commission updates, that, that was my thunder, that Paige just stole, I was going to introduce Pete, but... I don't have anything else, does anybody else have any comments for the, anything else for commission updates?
I move that we adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you.